City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burrus. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Holmes. Alderman Tindham. Alderman Grover. Eight-zero.
We have a quorum. Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I'm wondering why I was called first. I believe Alderman Fisk should be first tonight. Because Alderman Burrus was first last week.
You want me to explain?
I'm just saying, I mean, we-
City Clerk, would you explain?
I'll explain it because when was your turn to meet all the first in a row? We missed you, so I put you back in and then we're going back further. Do you mind? Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, March 31st, 2014, Meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is mayor's public announcements. I do not have any. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. First, an announcement for our folks watching at home. Our folks watching at home are seeing a graphic up on the screen which we are not able to take off at this moment. So, we will continue with the meeting. You'll continue to have video and audio, but you will have the Channel 16 logo there, and we will fix that as soon as we can. Next, I'd like to introduce our Fire Chief, Greg Kleiber, who is here to, with the help of City Clerk Green, install our new deputy, or excuse me, Division Fire Chief. Chief Kleiber.
Thank you, City Manager Bob Kowitz. Good evening. Mayor Tisdale, City Clerk Green, members of the City Council. It's my pleasure to introduce tonight our department's newest Division Chief. Brian, why don't you come on up here? Brian's going to be taking over our Division of Training and Professional Development. He will be sworn in this evening. And, excuse me, before we do that, I just wanted to give you a little background on Brian's experience and what he's done since he's been here with the City of Evanston, Evanston Fire and Life Safety Services. He joined our department in 1999, was promoted to Fire Captain in 2006. He was co-chair of our department's Training Committee. He's currently a Water Rescue Team member, a member of, or former member of our EMS Committee, and former president of Evanston Firefighters Association Local 742. He has a Bachelor's of Science in Psychology from Southern Illinois University. Brian has a Master's of Science from Lewis University in Public Safety Administration. He's currently enrolled in the Executive Fire Officer Certification Program at the National Fire Academy. He's currently a field instructor at the Illinois Fire Service Institute in Champaign, and a long list, too long to name, of certifications through the Office of State Fire Marshal. So I believe with Brian's, this is a unique qualification, a unique combination of experience and leadership, competence and knowledge, and high-proven leadership on the department up to this point in his career. And all these things in combination, plus the vision he has for the division that he's about to lead, come along at a critical point in time. We have, 55% of our department has less than 10 years on the job. So there is no more critical function in our department right now than professional development and training the newest members of our department, and that's what he's going to be tasked to do over the next year or more, is developing our company officers, our newest company officers, as well as our newest firefighters and mentoring them. So, I congratulate Brian. I think he's going to be an excellent Division Chief for our department. I welcome him in his new role, and to our community, and to all of you.
May Brian turn and face the audience, please. Raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Brian Scott.
I, Brian Scott.
Having been promoted to the office of Division Chief.
Having been promoted to the office of Division Chief.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will obey the Constitution of the United States.
I will obey the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I am appointed in the City of Evanston.
I am appointed in the City of Evanston.
In the County of Crook, aforesaid.
The County of Crook, aforesaid.
And do solemnly swear to affirm and obey the Constitution. Add to it. Go ahead.
I solemnly swear to obey the Constitution.
And I will discharge the duties of Division Chief.
Discharge the duties of Division Chief.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Sure, we've got all the time in the world.
This is my lovely wife, Amy.
Hello.
Stand up, Amy, so you get a picture.
Okay.
Here, yeah, come up here.
Next, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I'd like to introduce Terry McGee. Mr. McGee is the manager of operations for the DuPage County Water Commission. He serves as chair of the Awards Committee for the Illinois Section of the American Waterworks Association, and he is here to make a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. I'd also like to say good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members, and the City Clerk. It makes me very proud to come to these type of meetings of city leadership and not see any bottled water on your diet. So I would applaud you all for that, first of all. As the City Manager said, I am from the American Waterworks Association here today, and we are the professional organization for the water industry. In Illinois, we have our own section of the American Waterworks Association, and one of our committees is our Water Efficiency Committee. One of the missions of that committee is to try to promote efficient use of water in our region. A lot of people in this area think, they look at Lake Michigan, area's right on the lake, and think we have a never-ending supply of water. Now, this is not true, and it's our job to educate people that this isn't a never-ending resource, and we need to make sure that we are good stewards of that resource. Our committee this year put together a new program to try to acknowledge large utilities, small utilities, and individuals who do an outstanding job of promoting water efficiency, water conservation throughout the state of Illinois. This is the first year that we're giving out this award. We just came up with a program this year, and we're very pleased that we got seven very good candidates for this award. The City of Algonquin, City of Chicago, Batavia, Evanston, Highland Park, La Grange, and Springfield, Illinois, all put together programs to try to advance the efficient use of water. We had a team that we put together to take a look at all of these nominations, take a look at the programs they had. Some of them were about just conservation, some were education, some were rate-making, some were water use, setting different ordinances. There was a lot of different topics that were covered on the nominations that came through. Our team came to a unanimous decision when it came to selecting a winner. We took a look at Evanston's program, and it encompassed almost every one of the aspects we wanted to see a utility do when it came to promoting water efficiency. You have conservation, you have rate-making, education, public outreach. Again, public outreach and education to us are two of the most important things to do. To get the message out to people, we've got quite a few of your staff members here, Catherine Hurley, Dave, Laura here, they're all very integral people in making sure that that message gets out through the state of Illinois. And so what I'd like to do is, this right here is our Utility Water Saver Award. And like I said, this is your inaugural award, and I'd like to present it to the City of Evanston for this year for your water conservation and efficiency program.
She gets the prettiest.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. And again, I'd like to thank your whole team for the award. We also have individuals. I'd like to have them. All of your other team members.
Everybody stand up.
Here, I got camera.
Oh, I don't know. She's good. Erica, good Erica.
And we have a banner as well.
It's the cover of the water.
And one last thing, I'd like to thank the mayor and the whole City Council. American Waterworks Association is a volunteer association. We can't survive without our volunteers, and without utilities and City Councils like you providing your staff the time and resources to participate in American Waterworks Association is what makes us very successful. So again, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you do for all the water agencies. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our last presentation. Erica Storley, the Deputy City Manager, is here to talk about our upcoming activities with National Volunteer Week.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Council, Clerk Green, and Manager Bob Kowitz. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about National Volunteer Week, which is April 7th through 13th. Coming off the heels of our successful 150,000 hours in 2013, we've got a whole bunch of activities for people to participate in over the course of not only the National Volunteer Week, but the rest of the year. We've got somebody here tonight to present something that we're doing with District 65. And also, I also wanted to mention that the volunteer recognition event that we do annually with the Northwestern University will be April 24th. This year, there are 12 Evanstonians being acknowledged for their service to the community. That will be from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. I did leave some flyers out on the table in the back, so if you were interested in going to that event, the community is invited to attend, and we're excited. There's numerous students from Evanston Township High School and also Northwestern University, as well as community members, going to be recognized at that event. Also, the working group for Evanston 150 will all be recognized for their efforts to do the 150,000 hours in 2013. So with that, I would like to introduce Ava Luban, who is here from the Kindness Connection to talk about the event we're doing at District 65 on Wednesday.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for having me here. The Kindness Connection, we're a local nonprofit organization that makes volunteer opportunities accessible to young, school-age children, and we're really excited to be partnering with the City of Evanston, as well as the Lighthouse Rotary Club of Evanston, to put on our volunteer event, Give Back Evanston, which is an all-ages service event that will take place this Wednesday, April 2nd, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Wednesday is an early dismissal day for District 65, and so we thought it would be a great opportunity to gather the children together, and as well as families and the entire Evanston community, to come together to do service projects to benefit other Evanston-based charities. We'll be making magnet gift sets for senior connections, welcome kits for the women and children staying at Mary Lou's Place at the YWCA, designing bookmarks for the Evanston Library, writing notes of gratitude for our wonderful fire and police departments, decorating pillows for the patients at Evanston Hospital, and putting together energy-saving tips to help the Evanston community in general. We'll also be doing a drive, encouraging people to bring full-size toothpaste, shampoo, and toilet paper to benefit those served by Connections for the Homeless, as well as the YWCA. So it's a drop-in format, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on April 2nd, and we would love for everyone to come and help support our great community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my analysis, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do you have communications for us?
None this evening, ma'am.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Citizen Comment. The first two speakers are Barbara James and Junad Rizki.
I see my time to Junad.
Thank you.
I'll talk about the prop probably during my non-agenda topics, but we'll go on with some other things tonight. First, we're going to hit water sales. I recently heard staff had privately discussing water sales with aldermen and small groups. Let me be clear, there's really nothing here about competition or anything about secret meetings or positions on water sales. While this didn't violate the Open Meetings Act, I think it really has the same purpose, really not allowing the public to understand what's going on. For several years now, I have been stating the city water utility is a fiscal mess. My main issue is the senior staff do not understand the so-called business they are running. And looking at the documents I had quick time to scan tonight, it shows the same thing. You know, it was interesting, it's the savings the other communities are going to achieve with this. What about the Evanston ratepayers who are being asked to pay 100% water bill increase over maybe the next, more than several years? I have been repeatedly asking for this, the city, to tell us the current profit with the current customers, and I keep on getting referred to the CAF or Standards of Government Financial Practice. Bottom line, we are possibly operating in the red here, and no one in the city may have an understanding of the operation, so this is not much of an enterprise fund. My own simple analysis points to the issue. Evanston customers, due to the bad contracts, may be subsidizing the other customers that make up 80% of the sales. Tonight, off-the-cuff statements by staff and others that the operation is in the red is fine is probably meaningless. The award tonight was for water efficiency or whatever, but that's not the efficient operation of this utility, that it's a profitable business, and that's not what you have possibly here. Rather than wasting money on more reports such as the water reservoir on Northwestern's property that, to me, does not need to be replaced, let's spend money for a complete fiscal review of the water business. Some may think I'm opposed to water sales. I am not. Yet you cannot move forward to sign any new contracts unless you know what your business is doing. One really has to wonder why the resistance to look at this. The bottom line is, I suspect it would be quite embarrassing. So with that, I'm done with this, and I'll move on to SP2, which somewhat ties to it, and that's capital. And really, this was, one of the goals of this city was capital planning. Unfortunately, the city has not got off the ground on this issue. Just like the water business, this is a problem. There appears to be little accountability, nonexistent tracking of projects, and no care lifecycle of these projects. The recent capital tour we were on was all the more interesting, that reinforces to me, because all these projects were in different states, and I wondered what council members were supposed to be approving on this trip, or what you were supposed to be doing, and what was the purpose of the trip. And this, again, shows me that we really don't have a clear direction. I don't, you know, I think many of the staff people are doing a good job with what they've been asked to do, the people that are actually doing the work here, but I think the people in charge here are not doing a good job running this operation. And this is a total mess. And I suspect the reason the status quo is light here is because it allows people to manipulate the process and continue to waste money and do silly projects all the time, such as the kitchen and the fire station, which was a total waste. What is interesting here, we have spent considerable time getting awards and using staff times to get these awards rather than performing useful work here. And it's quite apparent to me, we're understaffed with the critical staff we need to run these projects and do these things, and that could be a long discussion at another meeting. To actually run multimillion-dollar projects, the city doesn't have the staff. You know, I appreciate Alderman Braithwaite suggesting I serve on the Utility Commission, but personally, I think it would be far more better to form a committee to study the capital planning process here and try to correct that. Given some here are happy, I suspect that will not happen. So, when Wally presents capital and the others present capital tonight here, let's ask you what stage of development these projects are in and what's going on. As you know, we're going to be talking about the water reservoir quite a bit, and it's, I have this prop up here, and we will talk about it, probably not on agenda, but it's what I've really come to conclude. There's been numerous studies here, there's actually a study on the city website now that Mr. Stonebeck actually is quoting in this report, that says you don't need to replace the water tank. And it says it in the report, it's on the city website, you can go find it, anyone can read it. Yet, we're talking about replacing the tank. And it's just, to me, outrageous as a taxpayer that we would saddle us with a 20% water bill increase to the people of this community to replace a tank. And my prop, which I'll get into, basically, if you look at the three bottles sitting here, the first bottle is 21 million gallons, that's what sits in the reservoir. The next bottle is the 5 million, I'm sorry, that's the total capacity of the system, gross capacity of storage. The next bottle is 5 million gallons that sits in the reservoir. And at one point, staff was suggesting a 7 million gallon tank to replace the 5 million gallon. That's the last bottle. That's the net you're adding to the system for 28 million, 26 million dollars. It's insignificant. The report even said, "Don't do it." The report, you can all go Google on the city website, 132 million gallon treatment plant thing. You can read through it and see what it says under the water reservoir. It does not justify this. And that's a fact on the site. And there's other reports and things that you have not been given, and that raises a very interesting question here. What's going on? Why haven't you been given all the reports? Why haven't you, all these things been discussed? Why are we going after the most expensive project? In the beginning, the director basically had the cheapest project in mind, replace the tank top. Somehow, that got lost, and I think council members, if, when the public understands this, and when everyone starts to read these documents, everyone's going to have to have a lot of questions. What's going on? Because you can't saddle people with a 20% water bill increase for years to come for something that's unnecessary. And tonight, I'll stop with that and wait to my non-agenda, and I'll continue.
Thank you. The next speakers on non-agenda topics are Junad Rizki, Sarah Simpson, Betty Esther, and Priscilla Giles. And Madeleine Ducray.
I guess I'm going to have more time to get into the reservoir than I thought, but the question, I've looked at the city website again on the reservoir, there's another report sitting on there that's a draft report that you haven't seen. And what troubles me about that draft report, it's prepared by CDM Consultants, it sits on the city website. After reading the two other reports that were done, one first by CTL, and then another report done by the Walker Report, which is Northwestern's report, the first two reports, in my opinion, are very professional. They were done, you know, basically with what I consider good engineering and value. The draft report sitting there, to me, seems to be like somebody's asking the engineer to draw a conclusion. And frankly, I could probably go through that and point many, some things out that just are not right. But the issue to me is, why are we creating all these reports? What is the issue here? And then the other issue is, has Mr. Stonebeck in the Utility Department explained this big study that he did for the 132 million gallon upgrade to the plant? Has this been explained to the council at any meeting? I'm not sure it has. And then I see in here, well, there's another report, because that's only part of the report for 200, I think it says 214 million gallons of capacity increase. So have all these reports been discussed? Have all the issues been discussed? This tank is really only a fraction of the cost here, of what these people are proposing. Yet, when you look at your capital plan, he's not bringing in all this other capital into the plant. He's showing you a small fraction, which is the tank, which is unnecessary, and that's what's even more absurd here. We aren't actually doing the necessary things to do the business. So what are we doing here? Somebody better ask some real tough questions here, and this stuff better be analyzed. This is not one of these $50,000 deals that we're doing here. This is, you know, you're talking of saddling people in this community with enormous water bill increases for something that's, it's just a mess. This is just a total mess. And I think people here have to find out what's going on. This has to be presented properly, this has to be gone through, everything needs to be analyzed, everything needs to be questioned. I mean, the people do not deserve to be saddled with this like a pension problem. So what's going to happen 10 years down the road? People are going to have huge water bills, and we've got nothing in return. And we may be into bad contracts. Tonight, you talked about CARE, the animal shelter, and you know, how they basically took people's money. This is not much different, really, in my mind, of misusing money. We're misusing the taxpayers' money. So that's all I'll say tonight, and I'm sure on April 8th, we'll have more to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Simpson, and I'm speaking about citizens' input and in particular emphasis on a problem. Alderman, to pick up from what Alderman Fisk said about, it's important for citizens to step up and take an active involvement in many activities. I think it's also important that we take a look at processes which deter citizens' input. And so in keeping with that, I'm going to read a letter that I think, you know, spells out a whole lot of things that hopefully you'll take another look at, a closer look at. I've been actively involved with many people who supported the Township Referendum. That's over and done with, though another speaker will talk about contributions that we still want to make to understanding, you know, the history and the transition, helping with that. This letter was written on March 17th, and it was mailed, and I have return receipts and everything. It went to Mr. Rodney Green, the City Clerk, and it says, "On February 24th, 2014, Betty Esther and I went and filed petitions with over 50 signatures, required number for those signatures was 15, requesting a special township meeting to be held on March 11th, 2014. The exact date, time, and location for the meeting was settled in compliance with statute when we were with Mr. Green, who was very courteous and thorough, at the town clerk's office in Civic Center. Our petition meeting date was officially approved and stamped by Mr. Green in our presence." That was his job. He's been in that position, I guess, approximately seven years, and so he certainly knows his job. He stated that, he stated that you were entering the meeting on an electron, he was entering the meeting on an electronic calendar immediately. So all looked, you know, fine and in place at that point. "The nature of the March 11th, 2014 special township meeting was to select another township supervisor. Wally Bob Kowitz, Evanston City Manager, was erroneously appointed Acting Township Supervisor at a city council meeting. This installation, according to statute, should have taken place in an official township meeting. There also, I guess, is no such position as Acting Township Supervisor."
Ms. Simpson, excuse me for interrupting you, but you, I'm going to give you one more minute and have four minutes, because you're not a regular, and I forgot to announce you have only three minutes, so.
Okay. So 60 days passed. Betty Esther was subsequently told that the March Township, not March 11th, meeting was canceled because of early voting. If you went to early voting, early voting ended at 5 o'clock. Our meeting was at 6:15, or 6:45. It was requested that it be rescheduled. It was rescheduled to March 25th, and then more obstacles occurred with that meeting. You can note that it was contested, that we didn't have enough people for a quorum. We actually have photographs of, you know, more than 15 people that attended that meeting. I will also note that Mr. Green, you know, the process seemed to be settled, so whatever the obstacle was, was when he went to put it on the electronic calendar. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I stay at 2031 Church Street. We, friends to save Evanston Township, want to make sure that the institutional history of the township is preserved. Knowing the history of the township is important to moving the program over to the city. Since March 25th, 2014, statements have been made which makes it even more appropriate to preserve the township history. It will help the community to monitor the township. It will help the community to monitor the township program as it is absorbed into the city government. Also, there's reference to the special town meeting in local newspapers, or misrepresentation of the facts dealing with the meeting. The March 2000, March 25th, 2014 meeting was a proper, was properly conducted as a township special meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Priscilla Giles, and I live at 1829 Ashland in Evanston. Although the election with referendum on dissolving the township is over, people are still asking if it has been abolished. Thanks to the people who voted no, but there were not enough nos, not enough humanitarian people to maintain its jobs and all the services, not enough nos to have it passed, like others saying, "Let Johnny do it," or not enough nos for people, people saying like, "In the Holocaust, it couldn't happen to us, not in Evanston, who prides itself on its diversity." Now, let's see how the diversity main, is maintained, even with the new building that we're thinking about, we were talking about last week, at Main and, Main and, and Chicago Avenue, with asking for the same demographics as the others that are now. Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline.
My name is Madeline Ducrey, I'm a resident of the 5th Ward. I won't take too long here. I missed the human resource meeting, it's usually at 7 o'clock. But anyway, I'm just gonna touch on a few things that I wanted to say there and here. I wanted to mention about the dress code at Haven School, which I think the human services could play a big part in. I wanted to bring up an issue about what take place at the Evanston Childcare Center, which was transferred to the Erie Center. This procedure, from what I'm told, also took place at the childcare center at the Evanston Hospital. Questions asked the children. Are you safe at home? How many people live in your house? Do you have any guns in your house? Do you have any bullets in your house? I need to ask the health department, is this law mandatory to ask these children that and ignore the parents who's sitting there? And if it's only asked at clinics? Is it asked at anyone else when you take your children to the clinic? I don't think so. Also, I would like to mention about the township meeting that took place last Tuesday, March 25th, 2014. We still have some questions unanswered here. We made motions for the city clerk to take it to the attorney general. The things that took place in the past and the present. We want the irregularities questioned. How did the legislators get this passed so fast? And how did Governor Quinn sign this paper that was on his desk? If there's no irregularities, we would hope that the Attorney General of Illinois would present that to us through the city clerk. And if not, the city clerk should tell us if we can do it, write the letter ourselves. I want to comment on the camera situation, the surveillance camera. I read in the Roundtable and the Evanston Review that there are discrepancy there. The city council mentioned that I was present at, or I looked at it on television, I can't remember which. But as I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, that the motion was made for $200,000, $100,000 for the youth center, and from Howard Street to Simpson.
Madeline, your time is up.
I will, I'll wrap it up. And from Church Street to Ridge. We need to know what's happening here. Is there some kind of two-way going here, or what? And one more thing, I would like to know if we, and I'm going to see to it and, and look into it, about the city counselor, city council having two terms, eight years consecutive. Thank you, and we'll mention more later.
Thank you. That concludes Citizen Comment. City Manager, did you wish to say something?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, there's been issues raised regarding the township meeting that was held last week. I'd like the Corporation Council, Mr. Farrar, to come up and share his thoughts. I know the city clerk also, Mr. Green, may wish also to share some, some thoughts regarding the validity of the meeting and its ability to move forward. I believe it was continued, and Mr. Farrar, if you could just share your understanding of the facts and how that translates to township law.
Thank you, City Manager Bobcowitz. Madam Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green grant for our Corporation Council. With respect to the meeting, the notice that, that indicates the township meeting that was convened on March 25th is very clear within the four corners of the notice. It, item number five says, "Discussion of where we go from here if the referendum fails." There's no agenda item here for purposes of the Open Meetings Act that would speak to electing any officials. Taking a step back, the, the process and the procedures taken with respect to the supervisor vacancy are quite clear, all in conformance with Illinois law. On October 21st, 2013, the Town Board convened. They made a minute order through Town Clerk Green with respect to the fact that the vacancy of township supervisor was occasioned and created by the resignation of Mr. Gaspart. With respect to the nomination and appointment of the acting township supervisor that was done lawfully pursuant to 60 ILCS 1/60-5, all of those actions taken by the Town Board were duly recorded by the Town Clerk pursuant to his statutory application to make minute orders. In essence, what does that all mean that takes us to today's meeting? It means that there is no vacancy. The supervisor at this point in time is Mr. Bobcowitz. So that continues unless and until the city council slash Town Board acts pursuant to the results of the dissolution referendum. Any actions taken with respect to the meeting last time, last week, appointing a supervisor, they're of no force in effect.
Thank you.
Mr. Green, has that covered the batter?
Yes, it does. Point, pointing an example, when I called the meeting at 6:45, there were 11 persons present. I then made the announcement that there was not enough people to be present for the meeting. I was inconfronted and said that there was nothing written, said you had to have 15 electors. If you looked at, then I wasn't sure where to find it, so I looked at the books afterwards and found that if you went down to 60 ILCS 1-1/35-15, it stated, "Quorum and powers of electors at a special meeting." Says, "No special township meeting shall be convened unless 15 or more electors are present at the meeting." At the time the meeting started, 6:45, there were not 15 members. I mentioned that to the, to the audience at that time, and I said, "I give you another three to five minutes." But even at that time, after we said pledge allegiance, there still were not 15. On that list that I looked at, the, the 11 folk who signed up, two of them I could not prove that they were registered voters, they didn't give out the information on it, so there was really nine in attendance at 6:45.
Thank you, Clerk Green.
A picture of the people that was present, and what he is saying is not true. The part about the convening, the meeting and everything.
Ms. Esther.
I did question it.
Public comments are over.
I did question it, no. Because, see, he's calling me a liar, and I did not.
I think you're both saying different things.
Say they was there, they heard, and questioned, and I asked him to show me in the book. He did not show me. He sent an email to me today that I got at 11:30, which did give the page number and stuff, and that was correct what he said. But at the time of the meeting, he did not show me, and I said, "If you cannot show me, then the meeting will go on." He called the meeting to order. There was 15-plus people in the room at that time, which made it official. We talked about the township. You need to read the code.
Ms. Esther.
An acting supervisor is not an official.
Ms. Esther, public comments are over. Thank you.
It is wrong.
All right. Next is Special Order of Business. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Dave Stoneback, our Director of Utilities is here. We've been working very diligently on our wholesale water sales. It is a complex issue with multiple jurisdictions involved. Again, I cannot tell you how proud I am of the water utility for the award that they received. I think Mr. Stoneback and his staff do outstanding work, and the residents of Evanston are very fortunate to have him and his talented coworkers work with him. So, Mr. Stoneback, before we begin this evening, I want to thank you for the good work that you've done, and look forward to your report.
Thank you, City Manager Bobcowitz. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, City Clerk Green, Dave Stoneback, Utilities Director. I'm here tonight to give a third update on our water sales, wholesale water sales attempt. And again, the reason this became feasible is because Chicago had raised the rates three times prior to 2010, and then four times since 2013, with the last rate increase coming in 2015. These are the communities that we currently provide water to from our water facility, Skokie, and then the Northwest Water Commission. Skokie became a wholesale water customer of Evanston in 1944. The big thing that I want, and their contract currently runs through February 28th of 2017. We, our current rate to the Village of Skokie is $1.02 per 1,000 gallons. The thing I want to highlight is, you live in Skokie, you're charged $4.056 a 1,000 gallons. So they have costs after they purchase the water, they need to maintain the water mains, they need to get meter readings, they need to send out bills. So that's why there's an increase in cost. The Northwest Water Commission executed a contract in 1980. That was after 30 years of negotiation. Evanston first started talking to them in 1950. We began providing water in 1985, and the contract was set up so it would be a 30-year contract from the first day of delivery of water. Since then, we've had two reopens of the contract, and as a result of each of those reopeners, the commission elected to extend the contract five years at each time, so we actually have a 40-year contract, so that currently runs through 2035. Their water rate is $0.64 a 1,000 gallons, and then the four communities that receive the water, Arlington Heights, Buffalo Grove, Palatine, and Wheeling, pay anywhere in the range from $3.48 to $5.41. The big discrepancy in the, in the amount that's charged for wholesale between Skokie and the Northwest Water Commission is that Skokie receives their water through the Evanston Transmission Main. So they have to help pay for costs to maintain our distribution system. So pipes larger than 12-inch diameter, which only is 22% of our distribution system, they help to have, have to pay. They take approximately 50, 50% of the water that goes between Evanston and Skokie, so they help to pay 50% of the transmission mains that are larger than 12-inch diameter. All the smaller diameter mains are the responsibility only of the city of Evanston. The Northwest Water Commission owns their own pipeline, which is directly connected to our treatment plant. Therefore, they don't pay any portion of the distribution system. This slide in the dark blue are the communities we currently see here, and then all the communities that are in light blue are, are different communities that have met with us at one time or another about the potential of purchasing water from Evanston. And then this slide just shows you where the other water plants along the north shore of Lake Michigan are. Our neighbor directly to the north, Willmett, and going all the way up into Lake County. Evanston is by far the largest of these water treatment plants. Other than the city of Chicago, we are the, the second-largest treatment facility in the state of Illinois. The next closest one would be Central Cape, Central Lake County's Joint Action Water Authority, whose location is Lake Bluff. They serve 12 communities, all in Lake County, but they're smaller communities than the ones we provide water to. In our attempt to sell wholesale water to other communities, we've conducted three studies. The first one was in 2012, and we partnered with the communities that are listed up there. And it was a transmission study to provide water to them that was conducted by Montgomery Watson Heizer, or MWH. The city council also approved the city staff to enter into a contract with CDM Smith to do a feasibility study of expanding the plant to provide water to those different communities. Without the large Joint Action Water Agency, we would, we estimate that we'd have to expand the plant to 132 million gallons, and if the seven communities in the Jawa came as well, we felt we would have to expand the plant to 214 million gallons. And then finally, at the request of the four communities listed at the bottom of the slide, we conducted another transmission study just earlier this year. Going back to the original transmission main study conducted in 2012, you can see that the cost to put in the transmission main is, is very expensive. If the Jawa is not incorporated into it, the cost estimate was $228 million, and if the Jawa was part of it, the cost went up to $471 million. Those are very large numbers, but because the communities take millions of gallons of water a day, those millions of dol, million-dollar construction can be itemized. For instance, if we did the project, the debt service that Niles would have to pay for their portion of the transmission main and their connection to it is equivalent to a 99 cent per 1,000-gallon rate. That would raise enough money to pay the debt service that they would have to do based on a debt of 20-year duration, 5% for the money that they needed. We estimate that we would have to expand the water plant to 132 million gallons a day, and so our cost of service study indicated that they would have to pay it $1.13, and when you add those together, we come up with a price of $2.12. We know that Chicago is going to start charging $3.82 in 2015, and we know that if, if this pipeline was built and they paid what the cost of doing everything came out, that Niles could have saved $2,300,000.
And Dave, can I ask us a quick question? So if Niles were a customer under that scenario, what would be the additional revenue to the city of Evanston, approximately?
I don't have it for this study. I'm better prepared to answer in the next study with more, when it's just a three. Evanston would have realized somewhere in, probably in the neighborhood of $78 million over a 30-year term contract.
Okay.
And it would have been larger than that had the Jawa been part of that as well.
Thank you. $78 million over 30 years.
$78 million over 30 years, and that's if the three communities that we're looking at right now were to, were to come to Evanston.
Thank you.
And I'll get to that slide in a little bit. So I, I just want to quickly go over this, because after we completed this study, it, two things determined. One, Lincoln would, would not partake in the transmission main with the other communities. They, they're too far removed from the other communities, and so it would be more cost economical for them to build their own transmission main to Evanston. We provide them with information that, one, if, I'm sorry, if nobody else came, our plant would remain at 100 million, 108 million gallon a day plant. Our rate to them would be $2.21. The cost for them to put in their $3.9 million transmission main to Evanston would be $0.45, and their total rate would come out to $2.66. Comparing that to the Chicago rate, they could save $741,000 annually. If we, if the Jawa came and we had to expand the plant the full way, they could save $345,000 Then we, we provide them information that if they were to begin getting water in 2015, and we didn't expand the plant, this is what we indicate, we thought they could save. And then we did an update, we took the, the Chicago rate and increased it by 2% a year, we took the Evanston rate and increased it by 2% a year, and came up with their savings. You'll also see a big change here from $1 million to $1.5 million. That's because the debt service for their transmission main expires after 20 years, and again, they start saving all kinds of money. And here, they would save approximately $36 million. Evanston would realize savings of $18 million on this. Evanston would realize savings of $18 million on this deal alone. So, if that were to occur, that's the profit, the savings, as it's referred to in the calculations, that Evanston could realize. Several, and then Displanes, which was part of that original group, decided that they weren't going to participate any further, and I'll get into that later. The Jawa, their contract with Chicago is a pay. They have to pay, and their contract doesn't run out to 2023, so they have a lot more time. And so, these other communities came back to us and asked us to revise the transmission main scenario again, under basically three conditions, adding Niles and Morton Grove, adding Niles, Morton Grove, and Park Ridge, and then adding those three and Glenview. And when Glenview became part of it, we also looked at a northern route and a southern route. The results of this, again, is that if it's just Niles and Morton Grove, the cost to put in that transmission main is $78.4 million. And then the alternative, including Glenview, that would be the cost economical is $127 million. But again, because they take millions of gallons each day, the rate to put in the transmission main is $2.07. And our wholesale rate, because we don't have to expand the plant, is $0.85 a 1,000. Comes to $2.92. And compare that to Chicago, they could save $1.1 million the first year of the contract. Niles could save 1.2. If Park Ridge were to join as well, because we're sharing our costs for production of the water plant amongst another community, the rate actually drops to purchase the water by 80 cents, and then it's a different pipeline configuration, so the communities get different charges for that. But again, they realize savings of almost $2 million the first year that they switch, if that was 2015. Over a 30-year contract, they would realize some great big savings. And although Park Ridge, oh, I'm sorry, Park Ridge, you know, it seemed like they were losing out the most over 30 years because they take so much water, and when their debt service for a portion of transmission main retires, they start saving huge amounts of money. They could save, you know, the equivalent of the other three communities. Under this scenario, over the 30-year contract, Evanston would realize savings of $78 million. So, it's, the profit, the savings would be there. If we did that and the money was allowed to stay in the water fund or somehow in the water fund, we could avoid increasing rates to the Evanston ratepayers.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that, please?
If the money was to save, stay in the water fund, or at least a portion of the money could stay in the water fund, we could not raise water rates to the Evanston ratepayers.
So, that's $78 million revenue to the?
$78 million to the water fund, which has an obligation to pay for services provided by the general fund. But that $78 million over 30 years, it could stay in the water fund, help replace 100-year-old water mains, help repair the infrastructure at the water plant, and we'll get into that next week when we come back to talk about the reservoir and things like that. So, this is why we're so interested in pursuing this type of activity. So, part of the hesitation for communities such as Niles, Morton Grove, and Park Ridge to come to Evanston, in my opinion, is that it's three entities that would have to work together to get this $78 million or $90 million transmission main constructed. My recommendation would be to have Evanston look at to becoming the lead agency for the construction of transmission main. In the past, that wasn't an option that the City Council wanted to do. But if, with those three communities coming to Evanston, Niles, Morton Grove, and Park Ridge, and even if Lincolnwood came, we would not have to expand the treatment plant. If we put money out, we could be the lead agency, you know, how much we put out and how we work it with the other communities, that's all negotiable. But any money that we put in could increase our rate to those communities, and we would also get, you know, the appropriate return on rate on our investment and taking the risk of being the lead agency. So, there's a payback for Evanston to do that. If Niles and Morton Grove were the only two that were interested in coming to Evanston, an alternate transmission main route could be developed that goes down Tuie. Tuie wasn't considered, and those communities basically get their water at Tuie now, but there's a portion of Chicago that actually comes north of Tuie. That's before you get to where Park Ridge wants to receive their water. And we feel that there would be challenges from the city of Chicago to allow us to put a water main through their property. So, that's why when we did our initial transmission studies, that wasn't a consideration. But if Park Ridge decides not to come, then it's only Niles and Morton Grove. We could look at that alternative route as well, which we believe would save cost on the construction of transmission main. Again, we, I want to emphasize that we are proposing to establish our rates based on the American Water Works Association standard, M1, which is the industry standard for establishing wholesale water rates. And it's very transparent. It's good for the, for the community. You'll notice that there's a demand charge, and I just, and I'll get into this in a minute. But if the Northwest Water Commission decide not to take a drop of water from the city of Evanston, they would still have to pay Evanston $2 million annually because we have our infrastructure and we're under contract to them. They could come back at any time, say, provide new water. They have to pay on the demand charge that we have that infrastructure in place to provide them water. So, if they take zero gallons of water, they have to pay us on that first part, the demand charge, and currently, that amount is about $2 million a year. So, where are we at right now? Well, the Northwest Water Commission and the Jawa have gone together, and they're currently having an RFQ out to hire an engineer to do analysis for options for getting Lake Michigan water and a new delivery system. It's been in the paper that they've had negotiations with Glencoe to build a raw water treatment pumping station there, raw water pumping station, and pump the water into Displanes, build a treatment plant there, and then put the water out. They, in conversations we had with them, they would continue to purchase as much water as they could from Evanston and then just have an alternate supply. So, that would help us as well. If they took their full 55 million gallons a day, our income would increase as well. And then Displanes has informed us that they will likely become a member of the commission, and by contract, the commission has the right to add as many new members as they want. What limits them is that they can receive no more than 55 million gallons a day. Glenview is an interesting situation. We just learned today that Glenview is proposing to renew their contract water supply agreement with the Village of Willmet and extend it for 30 years from 2020 to 2050. And the language in that agreement indicates that North Main Utilities, which is currently getting their water from Niles, will revert to getting their water from Glenview in 2020. And the rate also, the contract also states that the rate will be no more than $2.10 a 1,000 gallons when, in 2020, when North Main Utilities becomes a member of the Glenview system. So, again, they're talking $2.10, and we're talking 80 cents. And then, yes, they have to build a transmission main, and they have to sell bonds to do that, but they return, retire those bonds, and that's why we're proposing a 30-year contract so they can realize their full savings the last 10 years of the contract. And if they renew, they don't have to build another transmission main. And when you compare the 80 cents to $2.10, and say, everybody's rate goes up by 2% a year, you start at Evanston at 80 cents, and you start $10.10, and take them up by 2% each, you know, it's still going to be a huge savings to come to Evanston.
So, we commend our friends in Willmet for getting quite a good deal out of Glenview. They're going to make a lot of, Willmet's going to make a lot of money off the Village of Glenview over 30 years, so.
Niles, Morton Grove, and Park Ridge are still?
Excuse me. Dave Alderman-Raney has a question.
Dave, I'm wondering, if we were to construct pipe down Tuie, right, we would, we would have to negotiate easements with those communities? And if it was, for example, going through Park Ridge, would they just give us the easement? Or would we have to go to?
Tuie is a, I forget whether, if Tuie's a state route or county route, so we would have to get permission from the owner of that route. I believe it is a state route.
So, we would build the, we would construct the pipe in the street or on the right of way?
Down the street.
Down the street.
And we would tunnel at places where it was deemed necessary that we would have to do that.
So, when you, when you do easements with the state, you don't have to pay? You just?
That is my understanding that you do not, no.
Oh, that's nice.
And there's all kinds of options. We could become a Joint Action Water Authority to own the transmission main with those other communities. And then there's privileges that Joint Action Water Authorities have as well.
Looks like you've thought about that.
I, I think about selling water a lot. It's what I really, to me, it's my main charge right now, and so this is what I do on a constant basis. So, Niles, Morton Grove, and Park Ridge, they're performing their due diligence. In my opinion, the reason Glenview came to Evanston to look about getting water when they participate in the study was only to find out what our costs would be so that they, they actually want Park Ridge, Niles, and Morton Grove to become customers of the Willmet Treatment Plant, wheeling the water through Glenview, and then pumping it from Glenview into Niles, build another pump station, pump it into Morton Grove, build another pump station, pump it into Park Ridge, and originally, another pump station in Park Ridge to pump it to Displanes. And that's when Displanes says, no, I'm not doing that. The Northwest Water Commission's reservoir is in Displanes. They have to build about a mile and a half of transmission main to get water from that reservoir into the Displanes reservoir, and then they can pump it out again. So, it is my understanding that Displanes is very much interested in becoming a member of the commission, and that activity is ongoing right now. And again, I truly believe that Niles, Morton Grove, Park Ridge would be a lot more interested in participating, getting water from the city of Evanston if Evanston would become the lead agency on the construction of transmission main. They might even say, build the whole thing and charge us and get your return on rate on it, and it would still be lower than Chicago's, but then we're guaranteeing them that we'll raise our rates on the M1 manual and not necessarily when a new mayor comes in and announces three 15% rate increases, which has happened in the past. Their contract still states that they have the right to raise the rates, and anyway, they don't base it on the AWWA standard. Lincolnwood, we kind of gave them our best and final offer. I think they're a little bit hesitant to do anything because, again, when we were talking to them, we were weighing whether we stay at 108 million gallons, whether we get four new communities that would require us to expand the plant to 132 million gallons, or if we, if the Jawa were to participate and expand the plant to 214 million gallons a day. And all those costs increase their rate, and they had a hard time understanding how that would increase the rate, even though any one of those scenarios provided them savings in the very first year that they would receive water from us. So, we're kind of at a loss as to what they want to do. I perceive that they're waiting to see what other communities come to Evanston, what is Evanston's final plan, and then once they know that, then they would be looking. Because in my eyes, Lincolnwood has no other where to go. They're, they're too remote from Willmet or Glenview. They're too far, you know, it's either Chicago or it's Evanston, as far as I can see. So, they have to make their decision, and again, they have to do their due diligence. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions?
Dave and Wally both, what are the problems? I mean, I look at the numbers, and if I were in any of those communities, I would come to Evanston to buy water because it's cheaper. It's worrying about adding that much debt, and is that what's holding them back?
Let me take a stab first, Dave, and then we'll go, I'll certainly have Dave add to this. Mr. Stonebeck and I have spent a great deal of time worrying about this, and as the council knows, one of our first priorities has been to make sure that the residents of Evanston get the proper return on the investment that has been made at the water plant. And so, built into the AWWA rate structure is a 10% of return on our investment. And I think one of the obstacles we've had is that some of our neighbor communities think that's too much. And I think we feel that it's not, that it's important to retain, return on investment for Evanston residents. As you go through the list of communities, the Northwest Water Commission, who have been our partners for a long time, I think they continue to struggle with what the next steps are for them. I think they are very concerned that all those four communities, Arlington Heights, Wheeling, Buffalo Grove, and Palatine, all receive their water from one pipe. If anything happens to that pipe at any time, day or night, there are four communities without water. That pipe has never been turned off for maintenance because they can't, because those four communities rely on that. So, that's a very tenuous situation for those four communities. I think the commission is trying to move forward in a responsible way to make changes, but they also want to control their destiny. And I think that there's been a little bit of a struggle with the Northwest Water Commission about controlling their destiny when they're under contract to the city of Evanston. I think a second point is that if there are going to be a second pipe, they probably would like it to go to another location that they can control. And they have talked, as Mr. Stonebeck has talked about with the Village of Glencoe, they've talked about having a treatment plant there, they've talked about having a treatment plant taking lake water to Displanes. So, that is a challenge. Nimsey Jawa's, I think, has other challenges. They have finished some large capital projects in other parts of their system, and I think they've just not been prepared to make step forward. As Mr. Stonebeck said, with the village or the city of Displanes, they would like to join the Northwest Water Commission. Our understanding is that the Northwest Water Commission member communities are having difficulty in deciding if they want Displanes to join. Our understanding is that there was not a successful vote at the commission board. It's now going back to the city councils of those four communities. So, that remains some time. With the Village of Glenview, I think the Village of Glenview is, despite the fact that they're going to pay an awful lot of money for water from Willmet for a long period of time, we're trying to leverage the best deal possible. And they really worked with us to get all of our information so they could go back to the Village of Willmet to leverage that deal and look to, including Niles, Morton Grove, and Park Ridge as an additional leverage for them. So, I think it's clear now that Glenview is out, but our friends in Niles, Morton Grove, and Park Ridge, I think, would like to do a deal with us, but this is a very, very large undertaking, and we need to continue to work with them to see what we can do to help them with that very large undertaking. And finally, the Village of Lincolnwood, they have said all along that they want Skokie's rate, and we have told them the Skokie's rate is no longer available. And so, they have been just unwilling to do a deal because, again, they think we're charging too much, despite the fact we've explained where all the costs come from. Our bottom line is that we have to make sure the residents of Evanston's investment is protected. We think we can do that and offer all these communities a reasonable amount of money. So, the long answer to your question, Madam Mayor, is that, you know, there is no one answer, and I think it's a matter of us continuing to work with them, continuing to build trust with them. I think that this is a lot of money, and I think because it's a lot of money, there are questions that are raised and not always easily answered. Mr. Stonebeck, I don't know if you want to add anything about any of the particular communities?
No, but I do want to, again, talk about the M1 rate. And so, an example, in 2012, we completed $4 million worth of capital projects at the water plant that got built into the Northwest Water Commission's rate. So, if, it was 4.2 million. If you did 4% 20-year bond on that, your annual debt payment would be $312. As a result of adding those assets to the commission's rate structure in accordance with the AWWA method, their annual increase as a result of that was $258,000. And so, compare that to the debt service payment of 312, they're paying 83% of the debt payment for those projects. And that debt goes away after 20 years. And then after that, we continue to get, based on that structure, this additional revenue coming in from the, from the commission. The 1934 reservoir, which is another topic of discussion, cost $119,500 to construct in 1934. Its current book value is $882. If we were to build a new reservoir, yes, we would have to sell bonds, we could make it larger, we would have better situation at the water plant in case that there was an emergency, and when we sold those bonds, the Northwest Water Commission would have to pay their fair share, and based on the example from last year, they would wind up paying approximately 83% of that debt service. So, when we do capital projects at the water plant, yes, Evanston ratepayers have to pay some of that, but again, because 80% of our water goes to wholesale water customers, they pay the vast majority of the improvements that we make. It benefits all of us. Skokie, right now, under her current contract, does not pay under the Skokie right now, under her current contract, does not pay under the AWWA rate. We aren't proposing to capitalize or put that new asset of the reservoir onto the books until 2017, which would be after our new contract with Skokie is completed. We, I don't think that we're going to have the same, I would urge the city council not to have the same type of contract with Skokie as we currently have, that we develop it similar to the AWWA rate and, and get our proper return on investment from the Village of Skokie as well.
So what do you need from us this evening?
Well, we just wanted to give you an update. Unfortunately, this body occasionally hears from members of the public that we are not being diligent, that we are not looking to maximize the value of the water utility. And we wanted to make sure that the council was fully aware of the good work that we're doing. We will continue to work with all of these partners. I think the, the issue, another issue that we would ask you to think about for discussion another time is the issue of equity within the treatment plant, that the, the larger partners, certainly Nimsey Jawa, I think the Northwest Water Commission to a certain degree, look at a long-term, next 30, 40, 50-year partnership with the city of Evanston and struggle by not having some equity stake in the infrastructure for the water treatment. I think this council has directed us previously that that was 100% belonging to the Evanston residents. We're concerned at this juncture that that could be a deal breaker for long-term projects and long-term contracts. And would there be an opportunity for a minority share of the treatment infrastructure to be available? We do not recommend that at this point, but we think that that is an issue that we have heard from these entities and continue to hear from these entities, and is one that we would, we will continue to ponder. But again, we're looking to maximize our resources from the, the plant, from the treatment facilities, at the same time protect the investment of Evanston residents. And that's a, that's a tricky balance, and we may likely, or very well likely, will lose business from other communities because of our efforts to protect the investment that Evanston residents have made. So we'll continue to move forward, Madam Mayor.
If they want an equity share, they would have to pay for it.
Absolutely. And so then I think the question would be, Dave, what's the approximate value of the, of the plant and all of its facilities now?
Wow, you're catching me off guard with that question.
In excess of $100 million?
Oh, yes.
In excess of $200 million?
Close to 200 million, I believe.
So if we, so a 10% stake would be $20 million. So if, just to give you an order of magnitude, that may be something in exchange for ongoing revenues over the course of 30, 40, 50 years, it may be something that's worth at least additional discussion. We're not sure, we're not advocating at this, at this point, but as we look at the, at the chess game that is being played, we want to make sure that we have it all, really. We want to have the best treatment facilities, best storage facilities for our residents, but also be able to maximize revenue from the operation to support our existing infrastructure within Evanston, but also support other municipal operations. So food for thought, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a theme this evening, and that is infrastructure and investment. And next, I'd like to ask Suzette Robinson, our Director of Public Works, to, to give you an overview of where we are with our capital improvement infrastructure. We are, we are going to be coming back to you next month to talk further about facilities, Ms. Robinson. So tonight is primarily streets. We've talked quite a bit about water and sewer, but we're going to talk about streets tonight and talk about parks and park facilities and other city facilities in May. So with that, good evening, Ms. Robinson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Clerk Green, City Manager, Bobkowitz. I'm first.
We need to call up, I think, Cindy, the...
Here we go. Okay. I'm going to be giving you a, an update on the, the capital improvement program. We're going to be talking about the 2014, the, the project list and the schedule. We're going to highlight a few of the projects for 2014. Then we're going to talk about the 15 through 17 CIP infrastructure projects, which will primarily be focused on streets, streetscape, water main, and sidewalks. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the parks improvement plan, and then comments and questions. I'm going to apologize that it's going to be a little hard to see some of these slides, but I printed everything out in, in front of you that you should be able to, to see with any, with great detail. The first list is the parks projects that we have scheduled for 2014, starting with the Arington Lagoon Construction Project, which we think will be completed by the fall of 2014. Baker Park renovation, the, the things that have to be determined, we still have to meet with either the, the Alderman and also the community to, to determine what the process will be for that. But we do plan to do the design for, for Baker Park and complete that this year, by the fall of this year. The capital studies, we're doing an evaluation of two of the, the facilities, and we won't really start that project. We want to have some more discussion with council in terms of, of direction for that project. The Church Street Boat Ramp, the fall of 2014, Clark Street, the Bird Habitat, which I think has been a point of discussion, which we will be sending out a memo tomorrow to, to update that. But the delay for that project is directly tied to Northwestern completing their work. We don't want to establish a habitat in the midst of their construction project, so we need them to be done. And they won't be done until the fall of this year. So we are looking at the construction of the habitat in the spring of 2015. Curry Park renovations, we had a design day, I'm sorry. The Curry Park was, we met with the school, that's the Caravelli. We're waiting till the school complete their construction, and then we will come back and complete the, the park. We met with the community, and I think we have some good information in terms of what they would like to see at the park. So I think we're ready to go. It's just the staff time to, to design the, the renovations. Dempster Street Boat Rack, again, that's a pretty straightforward project that we will get done the fall of 2014. Fountain Square, for what we're planning to do for 2014 is really a visioning process, which we will probably start within the next two months. And we are going to ask the community to, to get involved. We've got a lot of, of different activities to try to generate some community excitement about what we could do with, with that space. And then we will look at designing in 2015. So we're leaving ample time for a lot of community input, since that is the, the major square in downtown Evanston. Gray Park renovation, for this year, all we are doing is designing a new sign. I like to call the, the information board the Clothes Line. So we're replacing the Clothes Line at the corner of Ridge and Main. And then we will also be doing in-house design for that as well. The Arboretum Bike Path, we talked about already, and the construction for that won't happen until 2015. And then the parks, there's just the contingency dollars to, to cover any immediate concerns that may come up as a result of the evaluations that we do. And if there are immediate accessibility or safety issues, there's some funds there to cover those. And then Penny Park, we just held a design day for that park. We got a lot of good information and feedback from the kids at Dewey and Cherry Preschool. And I think we are just waiting to hear back from the consultant to see what the, the cost will be for that project, to move it forward. But again, whether we, and using the Leathers model, will at least end up with a design for 2014 at a minimum. So the next projects are facilities projects, and I'm not going to go through all of these. But I will ask that, as you read through the, the list and the, the dates, if there are times or questions that you provide, comments, and let us know so that we can move things along. Some of the Civic Center Security Improvements, that's an in-house project that we will be complete, completing in 2014. The vast majority of, of the studies will be done in 2014. And we've met with Crown staff, Fleetwood staff, as well as Chandler Newberg staff for the, their individual facility improvements. And I think we have a list, and we'll be working on, on those improvements as well. So moving on to the 2014 Street Improvement Plan, part of this you have seen already in the CIP one. So what we have for all of the street improvements for 2014, we have the proposed start date and the estimation, estimated completion date. So the, the first list is the water main and streets that have water main and resurfacing. And the following is just where we're doing resurfacing only from the, using CIP funds. Then we have some additional streets that we will be covering that will come out in a, a second bid award that will happen later in August. And then moving towards some of the, the sidewalk projects and other studies that we have of note, Bridge Street Reconstruction Project, which started last year in August. And we probably, just due to weather and the, the winter that will never end, will not get that project done until July of 2014. And the Davis Street Protected Bike Path, that we have permanent markings and, and street furniture to be established to complete that project. And we're scheduling that for July of 2014 after school is out. So it'll take us about a month to get all of that done, and then we'll be done with Davis Street. We're doing a couple of studies, the Central Street Improvement Study, as well as the Ridge Emerson Green Bay Study. And those studies will take us until, through to 2015. Sheridan Road, Chicago Avenue Improvement Design, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But last but not least, the Salt Dome Project is actually on the street, and out for bid. So we will have a new salt dome. And we've been holding on to that project for a while. So we will have that constructed in August of 2014. The Bike Plan Update is still, is on track to be done by June of 2014. ETHS, that's a bike path that will continue along Church Street to connect from Dodge Avenue to McCormick. So we're going to be meeting with the high school soon, but we may not construct that until 2015, at least parts of it, because of IDOT. It's IDOT's road, so we're going to have to go through some approval processes to, to get that completed. And the Safe Routes to School improvements, you recently approved, and we'll get those done by August 2014. 50/50 sidewalks, so if there are still residents out there that would like to be on the list for the 50/50 sidewalk program, please get the locations into us as soon as possible. We're going to be bidding that project out soon. So we're, we're working on a, a list of locations. And I'm trying to think, is there anything else that...
Keep going.
That's okay. All right. So in terms of the project highlights, to, to talk a little bit about the Davis Street finishing, we have two things to do. The, the streetscape furniture, when we met before council indicated they did not want to install the pedestrian light, but we do still have the purchase to make for the, the benches, the bike racks, and the trash cans for Davis. And I guess the real question that I had for council is, we seem to have a little bit of a disconnect in terms of the actual color of the street furniture and light poles. We got bronze going on in some areas and black going on in others. So I think that was one of the things that Carolyn DeLuttrey, as the downtown Evanston, had a real big concern about is what color are our amenities? So you look at the Talmadge Lights, and they're black. A lot of the wrought iron around the, a lot of the plantings along Chicago Avenue are black. And then somehow another, the, the David Arms come in at this bronze color, and then we kind of switch to bronze. And some of our trash cans are bronze. So if you could just tell me what color you wanted, the amenities for downtown, and then we can work towards one color and not have two. Because some of the bike rack, the new bike rack are black, and some of them are bronze. So I don't know if you want to tell me that tonight, or if you want to think about it and tell me at some other point, but...
Alderman Fisk has a color, or a comment, I don't know.
I have one word, bronze.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman tandem?
Black.
Well, that clears it up for you, Director Robinson.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have zebra striped bronze and black bike rack. Okay, so Davis, the Davis...
Does anyone, seriously, does anyone else want to weigh in on that? You like... All right, I apologize for having asked them, Director Robinson. Keep going.
Is it orange, then you're black?
Orange and blue.
Okay. All right. So the, the street pavement markings, the, the permanent lane markings, bike lanes, sign installation, all of that will be installed July 2014. So actually, on April 8th, you get, you have a week to decide bronze or black, because we're going to actually come back with you for the purchase for the streetscape furniture. So if you could tell me on April 8th what color I'm ordering, that would be great.
Alderman tandem?
I would be glad to meet with you and, and give you my input as a design professional.
Okay, sounds good. I will set it up, sir.
Is it painted?
Yes, they, they actually paint them, they...
What metal is it painted over?
Sorry, what metal is it painted over?
You know what the metal is? Is it, what's the metal? The metal, the streetscape? You know what the metal is that they paint over? Is it steel?
The base metal?
She, she thinks it's steel.
So is bikes and other vehicles, do they chip them? Is that, will they have to be repainted? What's the...
They have not, a streetscape furniture, not because of the, the way the coating is, but the, the bike racks, sometimes they do, yes. I think because people bang up against them a little more.
Alderman breath white.
Quick question, Director Robinson. So is this just going up and down Davis Street from where to where?
It covers from Henman to Ridge.
And whose ward is that in? Okay, just checking.
And Alderman Wilson.
All right.
Alderman Rainey?
I was just going to make some snotty comment about all these questions about paint and none about the millions and millions of dollars on the water issue. So if we could maybe have a little committee to talk about the color of those benches?
Yes.
I'd just like a bench. I don't care what color it is.
Okay. All right. Okay, so the next project I want to talk a little bit about is Sheridan Road, Chicago Avenue to Isabella. So we'll be doing roadway and bike improvements along that corridor. Option one is a three-lane cross-section road with an on-street bike lane. So there would be a center turn lane, one lane of traffic in each direction, and then a bike, installing bike lanes actually on the road. Option two would maintain the four-lane configuration that we would have, and it would expand a multi-youth path on the east side of the road. So basically expand a northwestern sidewalk to accommodate a multi-lane path, basically separating this, on the sidewalk, a place for pedestrians to be in, a place for the bicyclists to be along their sidewalk area. But either option, we will be doing a, a sustainable parkway. We're looking at establishing a, a green parkway that will channelize the pedestrians to cross at the, the proper points. So if it's a little, you know, perhaps muddy and wet because it's a rain garden or a bioswelle, then that will encourage people to, to not cross or jaywalk across Sheridan Road. So we will be collecting, selecting a consultant, probably at the April 28th council meeting, is we will be presenting consulting to you for consideration. And then we will plan to do a design and then start construction in the summer of 2015. So the first part of the, the evaluation will actually, the community will involve community meetings and a steering committee meeting to evaluate option one or option two. We're not going to design both options. We're going to try to come to a consensus on one of those options and then provide the, the consultant with direction to design either one or the other. the consultant with direction to design either one or the other. The other project I want to talk a little bit about is the Chicago Avenue Improvement. This would be from Sheridan Avenue to Grove. Again, those are roadway and bike improvements. The bike improvements would actually go from Sheridan, and they would stop at Davis so that it actually connects to the Protected Bike Paths on Church and Davis. But then we will continue the resurfacing to Grove. And then that's also a water main project too, because we could actually continue down Chicago Avenue all the way to Howard, but we do have to stop at some point because it becomes quite costly. So we're going to, right now, we're proposing to install a two-way cycle track on the west side of the road. So there would be, parking would be impacted. And again, all of the Sheridan Road, Chicago Avenue, that's a joint, one consultant that will be doing the design and the community input for both of those projects, so that we could finish off the design in 2014. For construction, we want to construct Chicago Avenue actually in the spring of 2015. So when we close Sheridan Road for the summer after school is out, we'll have Chicago Avenue available to use. Northwestern is actually at the table, will be at the table with us throughout this process. And I didn't mention it, but during the, and I guess you'll see when we come up into 2015, we actually do plan to help them fund parts of the project. Another project that I wanted to highlight briefly is the Civic Center Parking Lot. We're actually going to be building a sustainable parking lot, and we're going to construct that this fall. We just had a meeting two weeks ago with MWRD. They're going to fund 80% of the project. The best way I can describe it, pretty much every place you see that's orange will be permeable concrete. The orange space, I don't know if I have the ability to point, maybe not. But part of what we're proposing is an actual entrance off of Simpson through the lot so that the garbage, we want to reconfigure that so that you don't see the garbage as you come into the building. So we want to kind of reconfigure the loading dock to shield that area, and then also to make it easy for vehicles, those trucks that are moving in and out, to actually watch for pedestrians a little better. So we'll have a little bit of an expanded parking, and we'll do it in stages so that parts of, two-thirds of the parking lot will be available for parking. So we're doing one-third at a time. So this was the piece that when I met, when we talked at the strategic plan, there was a question to prepare a 2015 through 2017 plan. So this is what we're proposing for 2015. It includes the streets, water main improvement, Streetscape Sidewalk, and biking improvements. And so the project total for CIP is just over $4 million. We also have federal, federal funds of about $3 million, as well as some projects are funded under TIF. And again, if you can kind of take, go through the list and see if you have any concerns part, our, we use the methodology that was established throughout that strategic plan, and I will get to that at the end. We did the same thing for 2016. It's a little more difficult to see, the CIP amount is 3.5 million, but that also covers, again, sidewalks, biking, water main, and streets as well. And then finally, the same thing for 2017, and we're right at about 2.6 million for those projects. So going back to the methodology, so we, for resurfacing, utility a priority. So if it was a priority, meaning that there were water main issues, that was how we selected some of the CIP streets for resurfacing. We took a look at the surface condition, and then we also considered whether the funding source, if there were grants or TIF dollars available to offset the CIP cost. So what the direction we were given by council, when we gave them the list of the surface conditions, less than 40 is very poor. Forty to 59 is the poor category, and 60 is the beginning of the fair. And you asked us to develop a plan that took care of all of the very poor, which we have. So when we implement 2015 to 2017, it'll result in us actually completing all primary residential routes that are rated below 50. So that gets us in a much better shape going forward. So just briefly, in 2001, we actually did a park strategic plan. As a part of that plan, they evaluated and classified the park systems, developed a detailed list of capital needs, and the system, the map there is the classification that was established. We want to build on that. We talked about doing an evaluation update, which we plan to start within the next 60 days. And one of the things that we wanted to do is establish a methodology for parks improvement, similar to what we have for the street resurfacing. And we think that we have two different areas that we should focus on, and that's individual park components, and then a park redesign. What has happened over time is that, you know, if we get focused in the park redesign mode, it takes a larger capital commitment, and as a result, some of the individual components in a park system may deteriorate. So we want to keep our eye on both things. So we want to look at when a park redesign, if we're going to look at the condition of the overall site. So if there are several individual components or amenities, or if there's a large community outcry or concern about particular amenities or their locations, we would look at, you know, perhaps a park redesign. But we also wanted to establish when it's just an individual amenity. For example, if the only thing the park needs is a basketball court, that we would go in and just install a basketball court, and then it would go down, well, not down, but then we would, when an evaluation happens, it wouldn't necessarily result in a complete redesign where we come in and redo landscaping, replace playground equipment, and it could end up being a much larger cost, where it could have been $100,000 improvement, that that was all that was needed at that park to bring it up to standards. And then we could take that money and move it and be able to spend it around in other places where it was needed. So once we develop a methodology, we're going to develop a 2015 to 2017 plan, similar to what we have for streets. And then we will be seeking to request a dedicated CIP funding level, much like we have for streets. So we have $1.8 million of capital dollars set aside every year for street resurfacing. So we will be looking at requesting a set money for individual park components and a set money for park design every year, so that we could keep things moving and maintain the high-quality park system that we have. And then, as the city manager indicated, we'll be talking about facilities at a future council meeting. Right now, we're not ready to make a recommendation on a funding level, because we think it's important for us to also consider the facilities piece at the same time. So we don't want to, you know, recommend a number that's so high and then not have enough to take care of the city facilities as well. So that is all I have for that.
Thank you very much. I don't see, don't see any lights on for questions.
So Meta Mayor, our plan then is to come back at the third Monday in May, on May 19th, to talk more about facilities. And then what we'll do is we'll put all of this together for the council's final action, so that you have something that takes you through 17, and we'll go in that regard. We have several items next dealing with snow. And Director Robinson, perhaps you can give the snow report first, answer any questions, then we can come back to item SP3 and SP4. But why don't we start with the snow report first?
Okay. So this snow report is as of March 31st, 2014. We'd like to think that snow is over, but I do believe that we have a rain-snow mix in the forecast for sometime this week. No accumulation, I hope. But I wanted to go over a little bit the storm characteristics in terms of what we have dealt with. And so we had at least four major snow events in which we had over 10 inches of snow resulting in the need for snow rock parking ban, or snow emergencies. And because of so much snow that we've had, I wanted to point out that we actually broke the record. So, you know, they, online I saw a survey about, where they surveyed residents of the city of Chicago when they were about 10 inches shy of breaking the record, and they asked people if you wanted to break the record. And so I think about 50, some odd percent said yes, and then they did the little squiggly blank, 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 no. And then like 35%, and then 7% just said plain no. So we had this debate in one of our, the directors' meeting, and of course, with it being the March Madness, you know, of course, the directors were all wanting to break the record. So we have done just that. We received 90.9 inches of snow as of March 25th, and the previous record was 89 inches from 1978 to 79. So that's at O'Hare, 90.9 inches of snow in Evanston. And our official site location is at Dimster and Asbury, the intersection, is where we actually have a service that comes out and evaluates the accumulation of snow that occurs at that location. And we have, we're tracking several inches ahead of Chicago, mostly because of lake effect snow. So even this last snow event, I think that happened on the 25th, we got a half inch of snow, and there was virtually nothing in Chicago at that time. So, so the budget implications of breaking the record. We, in terms of the snow overtime and materials, towing, equipment costs, the miscellaneous costs include our overtime materials for tree removal, pothole repairs, and fuel. That has landed us just over $600,000 in the hole in terms of, compared to what we have budgeted for the year. And so, you had a, I'm sorry. One more? Okay. And then, so what we did was I went back to do a comparison of the Blizzard versus the Polar Vortex. So we had the Blizzard of 2011 versus our Polar Vortex season. And when we had the Blizzard, we had 58.2 inches of snow. We spent just over $900,000. This year, we had 90.9 inches of snow, and we spent just under $1.5 million. So what I did was a calculation of the cost per inch. So if you look at that, you know, it's really not that much difference from the one year to the next. And that really has to do with, you know, I just have a phenomenal staff that does a great job. And we also have gotten some, a new piece of equipment that allows us to, you know, be a little more efficient in our salt usage. So we actually bought a brine maker, which, that's the pitcher that you see up on the top. So it actually takes rock salt and dilutes it down to a water solution. I'm going to call it salty water is the best way I can describe it. And so we mix that with beet juice, or, and we can apply it straight, so you'll see the stripy lines that are going up and down. So that's the anti-icing that we do in advance of a storm. So it actually buys us a little time when we do that. And then we also have the ability to mix it with the GeoMelt, which is the beet juice. And then we spray it on the rock salt. So it actually allows the rock salt to use, to work a little better, especially in the colder temperatures. It reduces the amount of scatter, and the rock salt actually sticks to the pavement. So it actually stays where you put it, and so it becomes more effective and results in us using less salt. And so I'm happy to say that we still have over 1,000 tons of salt in storage. And because of the additional technologies, that coupled with the tanker trucks that you see, we have two of those to spray the salt brine, we were one of the few cities that didn't have to spend $200 a ton to buy additional rock salt. That did happen to us probably about five years ago when there was a salt shortage. So we learned our lesson, upped our ante, and then also improved the equipment and the technology that, to make sure that we didn't find ourselves in that situation again. So. So the last piece is, we're going to have a community snow talk 2014. So we're going to ask the community, we're asking the community, and the survey is actually live right now, and it will be up until April 30th. And we have four different areas that we're asking residents to answer questions and comment on, the snow parking notification process, snow parking restrictions, snow removal operations, and additional services. And so additional services include, there's a question that says, would you like the city to plow alleys by contract? Plow alleys by contract. And the second question following that is, would you like to increase your property tax to cover the cost of the city providing? And then we ask that same question about snow. So not only do we want to know whether you want this additional amenity, but also are you willing to pay for it as well?
And if I can also add, one other issue that I am concerned about, and we'll be asking in this survey, I believe as well, is the issue of the sirens. I would like the community to consider perhaps changing so that the snow rock parking ban perhaps does not have sirens and the snow emergency does. I think in talking to the administrative adjudication officers who have been taking the tickets, the number one confusion is that people hear the sirens and they think it's a snow emergency versus when they hear the sirens and it's actually been the snow rock parking ban. And so I realize that the sirens are a very sacrosanct issue in Evanston, but I think that our residents would appreciate if there were just one kind of siren versus two kinds of sirens. So I believe, Mr. Lee, that that's on the survey, and our plan is to come back to you in the late spring, early summer, kind of with a whole refresh on, snow and notifications and all the issues that'll be covered in the survey. But I wanted to give a specific plug to the issue of the sirens. Certainly from the comments we're getting from our residents, it may be prudent to look at just having the sirens for a snow emergency versus the emergency and the snow rock parking ban.
Alderman Holmes?
Well, two things. First, on the sirens, I think that one of the things that happens to those of us who live way west, you hear the skokie ones, and people often get confused thinking that it's the Evanston ones as well. So that's another piece about the sirens. The question that I have, Director Robinson, is that do you have any idea ballpark in terms of what it would cost, property tax-wise, to have alleys plowed? Because that's one of the biggest complaints that I get when there's a lot of snow, is why can't we plow the alleys? So do we have an idea of how much it would cost?
I do not. We're proposing that that be done by a contractor as opposed to city staff. Let me get back to you. When we come back to do the survey results, I'll provide you with a number at that point, as well as for sidewalks.
Right. And one of the things that we know that our garbage trucks and the recycling trucks have to go down the alley, so think about that.
That is also true.
Sorry. Alderman Burris?
As always, you did a great job. Your public works were fantastic this year, and the $600,000, I actually thought it was going to be a lot more. So not that I wanted the extra $600,000, but it's not as awful. I actually wanted to bring up the point about the plowing of the alleys, and one of my residents has mentioned over several years about plowing their driveways. And it's not so much that they wanted the city to do it, but to have an easy place to find independent contractors to hire to do it. And I know that becomes a little sticky with, if we put a list of contractors, we're sort of endorsing that they're reputable. If there's a way to get around that, a posting board of some sort, you know, we, during one part of the snow, I had my husband run down the street and grab a guy with a plow truck and paid him money to go down our alley. But I think that's not, I mean, not everyone's doing that. But I think people would be willing to pay for themselves versus doing the property tax piece. So, something to think about.
Alderman Rainey?
In the inquiry regarding plowing alleys, regardless of how we do it, would you consider plowing unpaved alleys as well as paved alleys? No. So how would those of us who have So, how would those of us who have unpaved alleys participate tax-wise in paving your alley that's paved?
That's a very good question.
Yeah. Question, and the answer?
That's, I'm not really sure how to answer that, so, that, but that's a very good point. It would have to be split up among those with paved alleys, and that would be a very complicated process.
So, I would suggest you think about that before you calculate the survey.
And then there are those of us with no alley.
You would have to pay extra.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Robinson. There's a little difference in the numbers between the two charts about the budget implications that is the total amounts. The, the one on page five has a total cost of our snow removal maintenance efforts at 1.5, 1.479 million, but on the previous page it was 1.297. The differences are, maybe you recalculated some of the numbers and updated for the page five numbers. I'm just...
No, the, the number on page five is, it's the season, is 2013 and 14. The number on the next page, oops, let me go the other way. That's actually 2014, only 2014.
Just incurred this, so far, this fiscal year.
That's correct. That's correct. So, yeah, so we still have December of this year to add on to that. So, if you look at, so that, that difference that you see, the $300,000 is actually December's cost. So, the reality is, if we have a winter like we did before, we could be adding an additional $300,000 to 2014's budget. So, it's not done, we're just maybe done for the winter season, but we still have to cover the cost for the beginning of the next winter season.
It's not gonna snow anymore, I'm telling you, this spring. It's not. We've seen the last snow this season. But thank you for the clarification, and that helps.
Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Suzette. I, I think this is really excellent data, and I think the Public Works Department has done a fantastic job this year with just a colossal task. I'd be very interested, I, I think the alley issue is very, very complicated because, of course, there are some people who have, if you're on a multi, if you're in a multifamily building on an alley, and then you have some people who are in single-family residences, how do you calculate that? So, that's a problem. I, I do think, I'm getting, going to be very interested in figure, hearing what people say about sidewalks, because I think this winter, that was one of the biggest challenges for everyone in Evanston, was main, keeping up with the snow on the sidewalk. So, that, that's just gonna be an interesting question to me to see, because I do hear a lot about Will Met's sidewalks. So, thank you.
Alderman Rainey?
Some people have no sidewalks. So, if you, if you, if you tax for sidewalk removal, I mean, I have blocks in my ward with no sidewalks.
I don't have a sidewalk either. Alderman Grover?
Well, we're gonna stop plowing your street. What neighborhood do you live in? No alley, no sidewalk?
No.
Do you get other services?
If I say pretty please.
Yeah, talk to your alderman. The, my, anecdotally, my observations are when it comes to sidewalk clearing, because I spend time on Evanston and Will Met sidewalks, is that they were more well-cleared, and it seemed that the residents, when you make residents responsible, these, just my observations, that the sidewalks mostly got cleared and stayed cleared, because instead of having the municipality clear them once, and they don't go back and maintain the cleared sidewalks. And so, I may be wrong, but it just seemed to me that the Evanston sidewalks were in better shape than the ones that were cleared by the municipality north of us.
Excellent. All right, are we on to potholes?
Not...
Not quite.
I, I think then, Madam Mayor, if, if that is, if there are other questions on the snow report, perhaps Alderman Rainey would read item SP3 so that the council could consider that.
Oh, you want action?
I get yelled at when I do.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Rainey?
I'd like to move SP3, change order number three, special street patching program. Our staff is recommending the council authorized manager to execute change order number three to the contract for 2013 capital improvement funds, street resurfacing project phase three to ALAMP concrete contractors in a not-to-exceed amount of $225,000. The order will provide for the supplemental patching of bad sections of streets as a result of the winter season.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Suzette, is that gonna be enough money? We have a lot of potholes.
Yes, and we are, there's some areas where we will still actually go out and pothole patch, but, and then there are areas that are gonna actually be resurfaced as a part of the 2014 project as well. So, we think that that will help not only with the bad sections, but also with some of the utility repairs, patching repairs, because all of the water mains, the streets, crews actually restore all of those patches as well. So, we've got quite a bit of work to do that this will definitely help us to get it done.
Okay. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are, after the snow melted and everything's been revealed, there are a lot of streets that look, that the surface is disintegrated. I've also noticed, noticed on sidewalks, especially the handicap, the orangish-red areas that we put in, just crumbled away. And I'm wondering, some of this were, some of these areas were prior patched, like large patches, but they've really, I mean, every, you know, every block has a section or every two blocks that just looks like it, it needs resurfacing. I don't know how deep it is, but it certainly is a rough ride.
Yes, and, and what we're, we're doing, we identified a lot of those as bad sections. So, what we're doing here is not wholesale the entire area of the street. We actually had the, the snowplow drivers that are assigned to each route, they're the ones that actually drove around and identified, and they, they developed a map of all the bad sections within the city. And then we took that map and overlaid it with a 2014 resurfacing street and eliminated those. What we don't have, and that number came out just actually probably about 175,000, but it didn't include the water main utility repairs. We had a lot of sewer, frozen sewer lines that we didn't have to deal with before, so anticipating all of those additional utility patch repairs. And so, the, the process that we're proposing to do is not the traditional pothole patch. We're actually gonna go out and grind all of these sections down two inches and actually have, the contractor will actually come in and pave over. So, it'll be a more permanent temporary patch is the best way I can describe it, because we still have the, the actual condition or whether there's a, if there's a subsurface problem, we're really only buying a small amount of time, because those failures, more often than not, are a result of what's happening underneath than, than, and we're, some of those we'll actually address if it's just a small section where the problem is, just within two inches. But if it's a, if it's a base issue, it will actually reflect upward again within the next few years. And usually on those types of streets, like if you consider Chicago Avenue is a perfect example of, of a, of a street that really, really deteriorated quickly, as well as Green Bay is also another one, not to mention Sheridan Road. Sheridan Road was already in bad shape. But there, there, those streets actually show up in the 2015 to 2017 project for, for resurfacing. So, we're just actually trying to buy the time until we get to do the full cell, the, the base repairs, as well as the, the surface repairs, so that we can have a more permanent repair. And I also wanted to mention, we are also, when you look at Church Street and Davis Street, we had actually some failures, the sub-zero temperatures, you know, some of our newly paved street didn't, they didn't last as long, and so we are actually developing a list of, of streets where we've had some problems in, in certain areas. And we think that, that was, the, the reason for those failures has to do with how long the asphalt stayed on the truck. So, if it's the end of the day, the end of the run, because the asphalt is not, it doesn't come from the plant here in Evanston. So, although we do have a material testing firm that routinely does QC on, on the, the temperature of the asphalt, we think that, you know, it's either the, the run at the end of the day that, when they laid that asphalt, that's where we have noticed those problems, and we're actually going back to those contractors from last year, as well as the year before, and ask them to make the repairs as a part of the contract. So, we are following up on that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
Madam Mayor, thank you, Director Robinson. You had a really interesting answer to my question earlier today about when, when this change order really represents about a third of the original cost of this contract. There are distinct cost and timing advantages by not rebidding this, but rather folding it in, these costs into the existing contract.
Yes, that's correct. They will allow us to get out there and make the repairs much faster. And when we selected, we had a, a couple of contracts to, to choose from, and we selected the, the contractors whose asphalt did not get damaged at all. That's the change order. We picked that contractor based on the performance of the work. Yes, it was ALAMP, Alderman Rainey. So, they actually did a, a pretty good job with their asphalt subcontractor. So, that's who we asked to come back to, to do those patches for us.
Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor and Director Robinson, the link that you gave us to the snow survey, is that supposed to be live right now?
Yes, it's my, it's my understanding, yes, it is.
Because we've been trying to connect it, and it's not working. I mean, we might have typed it wrong or something, I don't know, but it's somebody else, it's working? Not working press?
We'll let you know.
Okay.
All right, seeing no lights on for further discussion, city clerk, would you call the roll on change order number three, special street patching program?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Preathwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing, the motion passes. On to the commercial solid waste branch.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, there's, there's one additional item, SP4, for approval of emergency purchase.
Ah, back to that one.
If Alderman Rainey could read the item.
Are you ready for that?
Yes, we are.
Staff is recommending, this is SP4.
Staff is recommending SP4, approval of an emergency purchase for the rental of semi-trucks and drivers to support snow removal operations from February 6, 2014 through February 13 to G&amp;M Trucking for $41,625.
Survey work.
And move approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve emergency purchase for snow removal in 2013, 2014 snow report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And Madam Mayor, before we go on, I was able to get the snow surveys to work. We'll, we'll continue to, we'll, we'll sort through it, but it, it looks like it's there.
Suzette, go right ahead.
All right. I wanted to give you an update. It's been a while since we talked about the commercial franchise. Just the background for, to refresh everybody's memory, back in 2008, we established, there was an ordinance that council passed establishing a municipal solid waste franchise. And the reason that we did this was to, to really give businesses joint purchasing power, especially some of the smaller businesses. We wanted to reduce the overall solid waste cost for these businesses. We wanted to increase recycling participation, give the city greater control over the, the health and safety issues surrounding the commercial and multifamily solid waste containers. We wanted to standardize the, the operation, operating hours for pickup and reduce the number of trucks. What we had was a system of, we had 10 to 12 haulers that were moving through Evanston, collecting commercial multifamily refuse at all times, 24 hours a day. And so, there was an issue and concern about that, so being able to consolidate those hours. And then we also had situations where smaller businesses were paying a, a much higher price, and then also being subject to various surcharges for fuel or transportation costs and disposal costs. So, we wanted to ensure that that didn't happen, or that at least there was a consistent process within Evanston. So, the, the franchise, its initial term was for seven years. It started in November of 2008, and it will end October 31st, 2015. It allows for five additional one-year renewals, an annual escalation of 4%, and it covers the commercial waste, residential race, rate, waste, recycling materials, and temporary construction and demolition roll-offs. It also requires the contractor to provide a customer service, survey. It restricts collection, the collection start time to 6:00 AM, and it also provides for one free 95-gallon recycling container per account. So, to give you an idea of where we stand with the franchise, these are the administrative fees. We charge a fee of $3 per dumpster for the commercial services, and then we also charge a dollar per cubic yard for, for the roll-offs. So, over the last five years or six years, we have not put in the, the data for, for year six yet. You can see, we have collected over $773,000 for the program. The, the category in the middle, the cost assistance program, is actually a deduction. So, that's where the city offset the cost. We had some, 90% of the businesses that joined the franchise experienced a savings as a result of joining, but the 10%, well, it was actually, the less than 10% that actually paid more, we established, we basically helped them get to the franchise rate so that we kinda offset their costs so that they didn't have an increase right away. And it ended up being a gradual to bring them up to the, the franchise rate. And so, we implemented that over a series of five years. So, and the other column is a, is a, is a plus column for the recycling rebate. So, the, based on the amount of recycled material, Groot had a contract with Swank that provides for recycling rebate for the, those member communities. And so, our franchise recycling also qualified for that. And that's, again, based on a rate for the, the marketability of paper. That determines the, the price for, for everything else. So, as you can see in 2013, not doing so well. So, the recycling rebate was zero. And 2011 was a great year, all the way around, even for our residential program, which I think we got over $100,000 in rebate from, from Swank for our residential program. So, the waste reports. So, during that same time period, you have a listing of the, the refuse accounts, the recycling accounts, and as you can see, over the years, the number of recycling accounts have continued to, to increase, as well as the, the tons of, of recycling that has occurred. So, we're about at 8.22% in terms of the diversion rate. So, our recycling participation increased 35.5 to 55.4, which is, is really good. And I would say that the biggest jump that occurred between 2009 and 2010 has to do with the, the city passed the ordinance to require multifamily units having that 195 container. So, but the, the diversion rate of 8.22% is really low compared to our residential program, which is about at 40%. So, we're doing much better in the, in our residential program. So the next steps for us, we're going to conduct a customer service survey. The contract calls for Groot to pay for that survey, who's the contractor. And so the survey will have questions on the franchise itself, as well as the service provider. We plan to conduct research on the best practices so we can look at ways to improve a commercial and multifamily recycling rate. We're going to come back and provide a cost-benefit analysis of establishing a commercial food scrap program. We want to review some of the ordinance language to take a look if there are any changes. We have certain entities that are exempt. We also have an issue about whether we can establish at least maybe a preferred disposal site, as opposed to, I think, we cannot restrict the use of a disposal site here in Evanston, but we can ask for a tier rate structure as a part of the RFP to provide both locations. So we're going to come back, and we're going to prepare a comprehensive RFP this fall that will include the municipal waste franchise, which expires in... But also our residential contracts also expire in 2015. So it will be an opportunity for us to really take a comprehensive look at our entire solid waste program, as well as the recycling opportunities and leverage for a better program that gets our diversion rate up much higher than it is.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is the point where I bring out my red flags. I'm waving my red flags. This is a very, very, very significant issue that your staff will likely be proposing major changes over the next two years as to how we do all of this, that would increase the diversion rate, especially for our multifamily units. We have many, 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 many multifamily units in Evanston who do little or no recycling. And we are looking at this process that Director Robinson has just outlined as being an important one, to bring back to you a plan that will allow this to happen. The result will be, I think, very much confusion, very much anger among perhaps property owners who will say they do not have any room for this. And so we want to be thoughtful about this process. We want to do this in a measured way. That's the reason we're here tonight, to begin the process of discussing this. But as it continues forward, we will be likely bringing forward proposals that will be very provocative, very different, that will have major impacts on the many, many thousands of residents throughout Evanston who live in multifamily housing facilities. And we want to make sure that a year from now, no one comes and says, "I never heard anything about this," or two years from now, "They never heard about this." This could very well be a major change as to how we do business with our collection of refuse and recycling. So that's the purpose of being here tonight, is to sort of, again, wave that red flag. There'll be lots of discussions, lots of community meetings over the next 18 months or so as we talk about this, but we need to start the process now. And we want to make sure you and members of the community are aware that these are significant issues that we'll be grappling with over the next while.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to remind everybody, not only is tomorrow April Fool's Day, it also is the beginning of street sweeping season, so please pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to call of the wards, and first I'm going to call on the City Clerk, Rodney Green.
I just want to play a brief recording of the meeting that was on the 25th of this month, to show that there is no discrepancy in what I said. It is now 6:45. Call the meeting to order. Let's all stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice, and law. Now see, there is a 6:45, and there is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 electors here. We have a petition to... 31 electors have signed a petition, but we do not have a form right now. We need at least the 15 at least signed up to have a form. I'll give another three or five minutes, three or four minutes. And if I don't have 15, I have to call the meeting closed out, because we don't have enough to represent.
Thank you, Clerk Green. Alderman Rainey? Thank you. Alderman Burris? Thank you. Alderman Fisk? Thank you. And Alderman Braithwaite? Thank you. Alderman Win?
I would like to point out to people that the roundtable stories are April Fools. I've already had some questions. The ones that are marked April Fools, or seem a little unlikely, are... Please read them more carefully. They are April Fools.
Thank you, Alderman Win. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I'd like either you or the city manager to address the whole issue of the proposals that went to the cameras in terms of the amount, because that is really beginning to be a big issue with some of the residents. I think we approved $200,000 at a meeting, and then I know that the city manager did send us an email, I believe it was, to inform us that the amounts had increased. I don't know if the public is aware of where those... Why those amounts increased. So if we could address that in some way, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to relay a message from Mary Galvin at the roundtable, and she... Gavin at the roundtable, she says, wanted me to let Sean Jones know that his contract is... Will be terminated at one minute after midnight tonight. And she appreciates his work over the years.
April Fool.
Thank you, Alderman Grover. City Manager, did you want to answer Alderman Holmes' request?
I do, and I have an email which I can read, but unfortunately I do not have it at my fingertips, the one I sent. And if you give me a moment.
It is my understanding, Alderman Holmes, that grant requests frequently go up as you do the due diligence to determine exactly what you need and where you need it.
And I understand that, Madam Mayor, but I guess that was a letter sent both to the review and to, I believe, the roundtable, which says that we are... We really were deceiving the public, and that's why I would like to have it addressed.
I agree with you that it should be addressed, and I think since we have been completely transparent about everything we've done with this grant request, we should continue to be completely transparent. I've stalled enough, City Manager. I'm running out of...
She filed it.
I have an email that I made available to the City Council on March 21st. It says, "Since I shared with you last week the final application submitted for the subject grant, and the subject is, city submits two grant applications for Cook County Justice Assistance Grants." Let me start again. "Since I shared with you last week, the final application submitted for subject grant has come to my attention that the final version of the grant application for the security cameras differed in two ways from our previous discussions. First, the dollar amount requested was changed to $395,000 to more closely reflect the maximum amount required for the project, including a better cost for backend video storage capacity. Second, I directed the police department to cost out the required number of cameras for the project, but not to designate specific locations for the cameras. While this direction was followed on the application itself, an appendix lists intersections which would have cameras. This was done in error through efforts of police department staff to submit a complete and thorough application. The maximum number of possible cameras were included, again, to help ensure highest grant award possible. Has been previously discussed, Alderman will be consulted as to any final location a camera is actually installed. My apologies that I did not call these issues to you, your attention sooner."
Thank you, City Manager. All right, is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.